Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. I want to take a moment to welcome and thank all of you for coming to attend and listen to the work that we'll be getting done today. Also, I want to acknowledge all of our city staff who is here with us in the audience. In addition, I want to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, our city attorney, Ms. Levon LeVondagram Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White, and of course, my colleagues on council. I will now ask for everyone to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would now ask my colleagues to please note your presence electronically.
Seven members of the City Council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the minutes of a called meeting on September 8th, 2025, a called meeting on September 9th, 2025, a regular meeting on September 9th, 2025, and a called meeting on September 16th, 2025. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Please vote electronically.
The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the council rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've now moved to the item City Manager's Report, item 25-271. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting additional 4E foster care funding in the amount of $252,461 from the Virginia Department of Social Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY2026 Social Services Fund for use by DSS to pay foster care costs.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item, item 25-272. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $424,733.35 from the Virginia Department of Education, and appropriating said amount in the FY2026 Grants Fund to reimburse the city for the summer food service program.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-273. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of certain property located in the 800 block of Lake Kilby Road to the city of Suffolk for a price of $93,400, and appropriating the purchase price to the FY2026 Public Utilities Fund budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-274. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting a Stop the Bleed Program grant in the amount of $40,000 from the Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation, and appropriating said funds in the FY2026 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services to purchase and install 68 trauma kits in city-owned buildings.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Next item, item 25-275. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance to reappropriate a donation in the amount of $5,700 by the DeLong Company, Inc., from the fund balance of the General Fund to the FY2026 General Fund Budget for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 25-276. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting $500,000 of Operation Stop Categorical Aid from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority, and appropriating said amount in the FY2026 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund Budget for the purpose of addressing opioid use.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-277. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item? And excuse me, Madam Clerk, are we voting on this one, or is this under the resolution? Because I don't see where it says electronic roll call on that one.
It's electronic.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
So we will be voting on this item?
Yes. An ordinance accepting adult recovery court funds in the amount of $167,000 from the Office of Executive Secretary at the Supreme Court of Virginia, and appropriating said amount in the FY2026 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund for use for the Portsmouth Adult Recovery Court.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Yes, ma'am. Item 25-278. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
Okay. A resolution authorizing the execution of the fiscal year 2026 agreement with the Virginia Department of Health for funding and services of the Portsmouth Health Department.
Thank you. Council members, we are in-
Hold on one second, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Item 25-279. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution certifying the city of Portsmouth's support of an application for a Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Port Host Community Revitalization Fund Grant in the amount of $480,000 in furtherance of the revitalization of 1117 through 1121 High Street for port-related uses.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And that concludes our City Manager's Report for this agenda. We are now moving into new business, item 25-280, Boards and Commissions. And Councilman Hugo, do we have any boards or commissions to report?
We do not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item 25-281, items submitted by council. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution we are considering for this item?
A resolution to approve the amended and restated FY2026/ FY2027 Community Services Performance Contract for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. To my colleagues on council, are there any more items to be submitted by council members? Seeing none, then I do have an item to submit. I would like to share with each of you in the audience today and all of us who are joining us online. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a moment of silence to remember the Honorable Gloria Webb. Mayor Webb was the first female mayor in the city of Portsmouth, and Gloria Webb served as a member of the Portsmouth City Council from 1980 to 1996. During such time, she was appointed and then elected mayor from 1987 to 1996. Mayor Webb served the Portsmouth citizens honorably during her tenure. Our condolences to her family and friends on the news of her recent passing. Funeral services are planned for October, and they will be posted on our city website. Please, at this time, we would ask that all of us participate in a moment of silence in remembrance of Mayor Gloria Webb. Thank you. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to ask if I could get some updates at the next meeting from the city manager? First, on the jail funding, the progress for the, how that's progressing? Secondly, on the gift card, if we could get an update on that? And lastly, on the RFP for the Crawford Bay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to congratulate Portsmouth Public Schools today for receiving a grant of $15,000 from Amazon to support their robotics programming at all three high schools. We had an opportunity to look at the robot at Churchland High School today, and certainly the kids in those programs are doing great work, which is a wonderful credit to our city as we attempt to build our STEM programming in Portsmouth. Also want to keep in mind that we won't be meeting before High Street Fest, which is coming up in October. It is a block party to take place on High Street to promote our downtown, which you all know, of course, we are looking to increase foot traffic and redevelopment downtown. And so, please come out and enjoy that festival on October 18th. Lastly, we have many children in the audience tonight, and it's always a pleasure to see young residents and citizens join us for our council meetings, so thank you for coming. I'd like to shout out my own three children who are here tonight to observe the process. And thank you to all the mentors and the teachers who have launched this school year. It's always a bit of a transition, but we see you, and we are very appreciative for all that you're doing to keep our young people engaged. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things for our city manager. One, an update on Cedar Lane manhole covers. There are still six that need addressing. And also, on Brandon Lane. We have two locations where illegal dumping occurs on a, really on a daily basis. I think the placement of no dumping signs and specifics on our illegal dumping ordinance would be good and would probably prevent that. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I wanted to just alert the citizens to, we did have our joint meeting last, was that last week, with the Planning Commission and some folks that went to visit Greenville, South Carolina, to learn more about some of the possibilities of what we can do to develop our downtown area in Link District, and just a lot of development that will be coming to Portsmouth soon. We have two more meetings. I don't have the dates written down, so I was wondering, Mr. Carter, if you could provide those dates, if you have them, to the public? That meeting is public. The rain caused not that many people to come, but just wanted to encourage citizens to come to those meetings because it's important that we have citizen input, in my opinion, for transparency to that development and so forth. So Peter, I'm looking at you two to see if those dates will be publicized, or those meeting dates open to the public. We have two more debriefing dates, I believe. Brian from Economic Development mentioned from our debriefing sessions from Greenville. I don't have it written in my book, but I wanted to make sure that the public was aware and had that on their calendars. Thank you.
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
There will be more meetings, but we don't have those dates set yet. And as those meetings are scheduled, we'll make sure that they're available to the public.
Okay, that might have been my misunderstanding. I thought they mentioned it in their presentation before, but okay, thank you. Just as long as the public knows those meetings are coming.
Yes, ma'am.
And we want their input for the development ideas for downtown.
Yes, ma'am. Those meetings have not been set yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
I wanted to ask a question of legal.
Attorney Graham Williams. Councilman Dodson has asked for-
Thank you.
Question for me.
I received a message from one of our violence interrupters. They wanted to know about the legality of their work on school property, and could I get some feedback from you on that?
Are they violence interrupters through the Portsmouth Police Department?
That's where the question comes up. I'm not 100% sure how they've been, but I believe so, yes, ma'am.
If you could just direct them to contact me at my office, or you could share their information, I'll follow up with them.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And the last thing I want to add under item submitted by council, the Portsmouth City Council will be having their second retreat for this year, and it will take place in Newport News on October 3rd and 4th. The purpose of the retreat is for our city leadership team and our city manager and staff is really to get together and share our continued vision for the city of Portsmouth and how we plan to get there. Also, citizens are invited to participate in terms of coming to that retreat, and we would welcome anyone who wants to come and hear or sit in and listen to the discussion that will be taking place with your city council and other city leaders. Next item, item 25-282, report on pending items. And Manager Carter, do you have a report on pending items?
Yes, Sir Mayor, thank you very much. The, there's a report back that has been made available to each of the council members. That was information from the last council meeting. If you have further questions or concerns, please let us know. We'll make sure we get those, that information to you. Thank you.
And just to add, I'm not sure if I had mentioned the address to where the council retreat will be. It will be posted on the city website, so if you wish to come and witness the discussion, certainly go to our city website for more details. We've now come to item 25-283, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light and hear beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body rather than any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker tonight is Mr. Aaron Cody. Mr. Cody, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your service. I am Aaron Cody, and my address is 2908 Tam Bark Lane. The last time I spoke to you, I listed states, state parties, and localities using ranked choice voting. This evening, I will describe six election examples. In June, ranked choice voting was used in the Democratic primary election for New York City Mayor. I misspoke in response to a question about this election two presentations ago. I incorrectly said using ranked choice voting affected the outcome of the election. It did not. There were 11 candidates in the race. The leading candidate in the round one results went on to win the election after the round three instant runoff with a majority of the votes, which is the election outcome I am advocating for when I ask you to adopt ranked choice voting for Portsmouth City Council elections. In November 2022, ranked choice voting was used in the Alaska Senate race. Using ranked choice voting did not affect the outcome. There were four candidates in the race. The leading candidate in the round one results went on to win the election after the round three instant runoff with, again, a majority of the votes, which is the election outcome I am advocating for when I ask you to adopt ranked choice voting for Portsmouth City Council elections. In 2023, ranked choice voting was used in Arlington, which was the first Virginia locality to use the legal authority given to localities like Portsmouth. Ranked choice voting was used in the Democratic County Board primary election. In this election, using ranked choice voting did affect the outcome. There were six candidates in the race for two seats. The leading candidate in the round one results did go on to win the election after the round seven instant runoff. The third-place candidate in the round one results went on to win the election after the round four instant runoff. These election results show the value of ranked choice voting in giving voters more choice without sacrificing majority representation by splitting the vote among similar candidates. The success of this election led the county board members to unanimously approve ranked choice voting for all future county board primaries and to pilot the use of ranked choice voting in the 2024 general election. In 2024, ranked choice voting was used in Arlington a second time for the Democratic County Board primary election. Using ranked choice voting did not affect the outcome. There were five candidates in the race. The leading candidate in the round one results went on to win the election after the round four instant runoff with a majority of the votes, which, if you recall, is the election outcome I am advocating for when I ask you to adopt ranked choice voting for Portsmouth City Council elections. Later, in 2024, ranked choice voting was used in Arlington a third time for the county board general election. Using ranked choice voting did not affect the outcome. There were four candidates in the race. The leading candidate in the round one results won the election in the first round with a majority of the votes, which, well, you know the rest. In June, ranked choice voting was used in Charlottesville, the second Virginia locality to use the legal authority given to localities like Portsmouth. Ranked choice voting was used for the Democratic County Board primary election. Using ranked choice voting did not affect the outcome. There were three candidates in the race for two seats. The leading two candidates in the round one results won the election in the first round with, you guessed it, a majority of the votes for each seat. These six examples, when ranked choice voting was used, demonstrate the main benefit of using ranked choice voting, electing candidates with a demonstrated majority of voter support. In the fifth of the five of six examples, the outcome was not affected by the use of ranked choice voting. In the one example when the use of ranked choice voting did affect the outcome, it demonstrates one of the additional benefits, supporting increased voter choice without splitting the vote and risking representation without a demonstrated majority of support. My next presentation will review the Portsmouth City Council's legal authority to adopt ranked choice voting for city council elections. As always, I will be available after this meeting to answer questions and listen to comments. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Christopher Hines. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Just give me a second to get everything pulled up here. My name is Christopher Hines. Address is 119 Kingsgate Drive, Portsmouth, Virginia 23701. All right. So, like I said before, my name is Christopher Hines. I'm the director of New Generation Marching Band. I come before you today not as just a concerned citizen, but as a voice of a program that's been changing lives quietly, persistently, and with little support for over three decades. For 33 years, the New Generation Marching Band has been a beacon of hope, discipline, and opportunity for the youth of the city. It's not a program for troubled kids. It is a program for talented kids with heart, with rhythm, and with drive. Kids who would rather carry a drum than carry trauma. Kids who find purpose in performance and unity in every uniform they put on. But despite everything this band has done for Portsmouth, it has been chronically underfunded, overlooked by the leadership that should be challenged or championing. Let me be clear, this is not a hobby, it's a lifeline, and for many, it's the only structured, positive, and safe outlet available in the city that continues to struggle with poverty and violence. When these kids put down their instruments and their flagpoles, if there's no place to turn, they go back into the streets. And we all know what the streets offer, not opportunity, despair, and no direction. This band has sent hundreds of students to college, many the first in their families to go, and has instilled discipline, leadership, and pride in young people who may have otherwise been statistics. From these ranks have come professional athletes such as Darryl Tap and medical professionals like Dr. Tor Rawls, proof that when you invest in the youth, the return on that investment is invaluable. Yet here we are, 33 years later, still begging for basic support, not for luxuries, not for frills, just the essentials that keep the rehearsals going, to maintain instruments, to travel to performances, where these young people represent this city with pride and excellence. Portsmouth can no longer afford to ignore the power of this program because when you support New Generation Marching Band, you're not just funding music, you're funding the membership structure, education, and hope. You're standing up and saying to these kids, "We see you, we believe in you, and we're invested in your future." Council members, I urge you, don't let another year go by where this band will continue to do the city's work without the city's support. If we are truly serious about reducing crime, uplifting our youth, and restoring community pride, this is the most effective and proven place to start. I wanted to read two more things, and I purposely put this at the end. Civil rights icon John Lewis. He encouraged standing up to injustice through nonviolent action. I remember in 2016, I stood in the same chamber, and Vice Mayor, you referred to me as a thug. I never forgot that moment. I never forgot that moment, when we stood and blocked the tunnel traffic. I took a screenshot of this tweet from July the 10th, 2016. "I waited on this opportunity. I have not seen you face-to-face since." And that tweet says, "I'm getting calls from people who are having trouble getting home, and as far as I know, nobody has been arrested. Nobody but thugs." Bill Moody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Vice Mayor Moody, you have the floor. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got to respond to that. My comments were not that specific, young man, but it was for the folks who shut down the tunnel and really, by doing so, endangered lives. That's a main thug affair, part of the interstate system. And what he also didn't mention, a good friend of mine told me later that the word "thug" from my generation means something entirely different today. After he told me that, I also did an online apology that Mr. Cody apparently missed. But I just wanted to set the record straight on that.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Joseph Kelly. Mr. Kelly, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. How y'all doing tonight? My name is Joseph Kelly. Address is 27 Hobson Street, Truxton, Old Truxton, you know, historic Truxton. I came to for two things. Well, I came for a couple of things, but I'm going to get this out of the way. I would like to thank two members of my community. One's a police officer, one's the code enforcer. Kenneth Johnson done a remarkable job in my community. He makes sure he gets involved with everybody, makes sure the codes are stood, the standards, making sure everyone is taken care of. And Officer Walter, he does a really, really good job of coming to our meetings and getting involved. Now, besides that, I want to say thank you to the city for the assistance that they gave me for doing my festival, the Island Fox Music Festival, which was back in July. I didn't get a chance back to get up here and say thank you, guys, but I want to make sure to understand that the community needs y'all help. So that helps out a lot when the city get involved with the community for these festivals. Because these festivals, us as citizens are trying to raise money for our community so our kids can have a better place to live, a better life. They just did a festival last weekend. I went to Saturday called Beats and Pedals. It was downtown here. It was a beautiful thing to see what the young lady did. I think her name is Sabrina Mann. She did a really good job. They did a lot of things for people. And I think that the city needs to get more involved in putting these community festivals out to the people so they know where to go. Because I find out just through the internet, I don't know from the city board that they actually put it out there like that. But they were giving away food, healthcare, advice, all types of... The young man that just came up here, Mr. Hines, I want to say, yo, thank you, man, because they had talented kids out there. Some super talented kids was out there performing. And just to walk around and see those type of people in our community, we needed to be more structured. Last and not least, I want to bring up the violence in this community. Like, it is getting ridiculous, man. It is really getting crazy in Portsmouth. There's too much violence. I'm quite sure y'all heard about the shooting that happened on Dahlia and Manly? Like, there was a camera there two weeks before that, three weeks before that, a month before that. There was a camera sitting there. That violence wasn't happening. They moved the cameras, and guess what? Someone get murdered. Like, we got to do better. Like, I see that we have a civic league leader. Why are our civic league leaders not getting together, having meetings, trying to make the city look better? Like, we live in one city. I don't know why I have to keep preaching this to everybody, but we only live in one city. It's time for change. There's going to be a lot more kids. If we just sit back and keep on doing things the way they do, there's going to be a lot of more kids murdered in these streets. And, I mean, we need y'all help. Like, the only thing that could change that is if the city start putting it down to where our leaders start meeting. I think if I had a good idea and you had a good idea, we discuss ideas together, we can come up with a great idea. But we got to do something. And I'm here, you know, I'm stuck in Portsmouth. No, I'm not going nowhere. I'm going to stay until I go. So it's going to be nice. It's going to be a nice place. I want all kids to live a safe life. So I'm just asking for y'all's assistance as city leaders to, like, let's get together and let's do something about change. Let's meet with these people that's doing these festivals. Let's make Portsmouth a happy place to be in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Kelly, for speaking up tonight. I want to point you to the Crime Task Force. The Community Engagement Committee on the Crime Task Force is interested in talking to people like you who have ideas on how to address some of the issues that we have that are leading to the gun violence. So please visit the city website, track down the Crime and Gun Violence Task Force page, and get in contact with the Community Engagement Team because they want to hear your ideas. Thank you.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, there also is a Civic League meeting where all the leaders do get together. Mr. Ray Smith runs that out at the Cavalier Manor location once a month.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. David House. Mr. House, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is David House, and I live in Portsmouth, Virginia. So I want to address a property that's in the West Haven section of Portsmouth. So since May of 2023, this property has been cited 13 times with inspection and zoning violations. The city just cites the property, closes the violations, and walks away. This is not the exception. This has become the norm. I wrote to the City Council zoning inspection October 17th, 2022, October 14th, 2023, and you, our current council and city manager, on August 21st, 2024. You are our elected leaders who have the ability to direct others to make a change, but by allowing these violations to continue, it has failed the community and the neighborhood. When meeting with the city manager, he asked that we give the city grace addressing issues, but waiting 35 months for the city to actually take action and allow follow-through until a violation is removed. I think it stretches the limit of grace. The remedy for ongoing issues can be found under State Code Title 48, which is nuisances. Investigation of complaints by special grand jury. When a complaint is made to the city court of any county or the corporation court of any city of this Commonwealth by five or more citizens of any county, town, or city or town, setting forth the existence of a public or common nuisance, the court or judge thereof in vacation shall summon a special grand jury in the mode provided by the law to the next term of such court to specifically investigate such complaint. The complaint can be mailed to the Chief Judge of the Circuit Court, Judge Brenda Spry, PO Box 1217, Portsmouth, Virginia 23705. Citizens now have another tool in their toolbox that they can get issues addressed. I keep saying that inspection and zoning are failing to do the job, and each time I come before you at a City Council meeting, I continue to show you the examples to solidify my case. I only have five minutes to have my voice be heard to identify repeated issues that are allowed to exist within the city. I challenge you to come along with me, ride, and see the issues firsthand. I submit C Click Fix tickets, as you suggested. Many are still open or have only been acknowledged, and are just sitting in the queue for months. They're just open and closed. In this violation of the property identified, temporary fencing installation, tarps covering the fence, shielding debris, trash and debris, and other stuff on the property, and operative vehicles, and parking on unimproved surfaces. Please look at the violations and the pictures provided, and you will see 31 months worth of pictures documented the continued violations. I've done C Click Fix for zoning inspections. Zoning has still not answered mine after over a year. If you go to page four, a neighbor called complaining regarding debris in the backyard. Set up a meeting with them to take a look at the debris. Six days later, the violation was closed. If you look at the last two, in March, I mean, in February, they opened a violation, zoning violation, inspection violation, and closed them just over a month later. If you look at the pictures starting on page one, you see how it's progressed from March 23, and it just keeps getting worse every day. If you look on page... If you look on page six, remove all debris from the exterior of the property with emphasis, tarps covering fence, exercise equipment, privacy fence, car parts, scrap wood, scrap metal. It's still there today. Almost three years later, still there today. If you go to page nine, one violation was closed and another violation was opened the same day, citing the same exact violation. Like I said, they keep opening and closing. If you go to the last page, I just found this out today. The last page is my C Click Fix. Okay, I did a FOIA to Peter asking for all issues with this property from August 24 until August 25. They failed to provide me with this stuff. This is repeat, day in, day out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Sergio O'Neil. Sir, please come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Sergio O'Neil. I reside at 1420 Elm Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. You know, I come down here a lot, you know, to speak on various topics, especially those concerning the youth of this city. Before you tonight, Councilwoman Bryant mentioned that there were a lot of youth in the audience. Well, some of the youth in this audience belong to New Generation Marching Warriors, a band that has been in this city for the last 33 years, 33 years. So to make a case and point, I'm 38. So I was five when this band was born. I just celebrated my 38th birthday on the 19th of this month. So to see a band that has grown over 33 years, over 33 years in the city of Portsmouth, that is an amazing feat. Given that $0.00 is actually coming from the city's coffers, and let me make it perfectly clear when I say that. We're not coming down here begging for city money because, at the end of the day, you have some very dedicated parents and staff members to my left in that back corner back there that make sacrifices every day to support hundreds of kids that come through this city. That's not what we're coming here for. We're coming here to rectify our situation. Last, this previous weekend, this band was supposed to perform at the Beats and Pedals Festival. If I say that name wrong, charges to my head and not my heart. However, there was some confusion with access to the recreation center where the band equipment is stored. And let me make it clear to Mr. Mark Palmerchuk, our Portsmouth Rec. Director, because, see, he's answered the phone plenty of times when situations have occurred. I'm almost quite certain he was unaware of what took place. Because the last time was the situation, he got on the phone and made sure it was corrected. So I'm quite sure he didn't know what was going on. But it shouldn't take all of that. Let me also make something else perfectly clear. Whoever is Mr. Carter, whoever's running that center, you might need to get with Mr. Palmerchuk and find out what's going on, what their real MO is. Because from what I understand, we have a certain individual who's operating that, who's now the recreation supervisor over there, or what they call the recreation specialist at their site, that may have some ulterior motives. And I'm not telling you nothing I don't know because, see, guess what? I was raised in that recreation center. I can name about 10 recreation specialists that have come through neighborhood facilities. How do I know? Because I was there with them. Over 2,000-plus hours of volunteer time in that recreation center. You can look it up. I'm not saying that to be threatening. I'm not saying that to catch people off guard. I'm catching it for what is real. At the end of the day, this band contributes countless hours of time and attention to kids who otherwise would have been either in one or two places, dead or in juvenile detention. Because, guess what? We can call it for what we want, but we don't have a very welcoming environment when it comes to our youth in this city because some, very quite few of them, have decided to run chaos and confusion through it. Chief Jenkins knows full well. Sheriff Moore knows full well. We're tired of catching the short end of the stick when it comes to our youth. The parents of this city pay a lot to live here. Some by choice, some by force. And this day and time, I'm on the by-choice standard. But let me make it perfectly clear. I choose to live here because I was born and raised here. I choose to contribute to New Generation because I know the work that they do. I choose to show up to meetings like this to let people know you can't sing a song and dance to everybody and think it's going to be all good because that's not how it goes here. So all I'm going to ask is that our council is paying attention, our city manager is paying attention to support these youth groups that are coming to represent the city of Portsmouth in a very positive manner. And last, with my last ten seconds, if the members of New Generation and those supporters would please stand so y'all could see that just what I'm talking about for the visual. And this is not all of them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you all for coming. Our next speaker is Mr. House, Daniel House. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. Daniel House, 114 Gillis Road. So I'm here tonight because this property that's before you is 2301 Victory Boulevard. It's got plywood on the side of the brick building and plywood on the basement access. It actually shows windows that are missing or stay open. So on page two, there's an email from the farmer saying what's happened on May 31 of last year. An unfortunate vehicle ran into the building and caused structural damage. So they reported it to the city, and on the 6th of June, on page three, a violation notice was cited. It listed five things, and unfortunately, I'm not the best typist either, but on line four, it says, "Repair all damage to inner surfaces." Okay? So, but that's what you're sending out for violation notices. But like I said, it listed five conditions that needed to be fixed. The next page is a final notice. And that's really of interest because the final notice is also addressed to the property owner. And it says, "As a reminder, the violations are as follows." In the red hyphenated box, in the yellow, there's nothing listed. You didn't list any violations that need to be corrected. And this is a final notice. So then you go down to the next paragraph. It says, "The owner, agent, tenant, you are required to correct these conditions as stated above." You didn't list anything to fix. So this is a final notice, and it says in the final notice that if violations are not corrected by this date, the matter will refer to the Portsmouth General District Court. How ironic. So we go back and look. If we go to the next page, the next page is the case activity sheet. The case activity sheet shows five re-inspections for property maintenance. And then down further, there's a final re-inspection in the yellow. Okay? So we already showed and talked about those documents. But then you have six other re-inspections by the city inspector. And what happens? On the last day, the case is closed. There's no action taken. The case is closed. So from May 31 of last year till... So from May 31st of last year till today, the structure's vacant, it's damaged, it has structural damage, and the city's taken absolutely no lead to get it fixed, other than to cite it, go back out 11 times, and then close it. That's our taxpayer dollars at work. So then, like I said, there was, there was five re-inspections, and who holds the inspector accountable? Somebody has to hold these inspectors accountable, because this is my taxpayer money and everybody else's money, and they go out there and, like my brother said, you open a case, you close the case. Okay? Something's gotta be done. So let's look at section, uh, section 1731, 33. It says, the care and, and care of structure. So anytime a building's closed, and he listed it as closed, it said, the owner of the building, whether the same is, or becomes vacant, shall securely close and lock, and thereafter, continual, keep closing locked all doors and windows. And I showed you on, on the first page, there's on, that, just that side of the building, there's six windows that have been open for months. And then you go down to section B, found oceans and walls shall be kept by the owner of the premises, sound and free from defects and damage, maintained in accordance with the construction and repair standards of the building code. That's your own city code, okay? That your inspector's supposed to enforce, and they failed to enforce it. So how are, how am I to, to have any relevance as, as to, to what the inspectors actually do if the, if you allow them to, to open a case, inspect it, close it without any action? Something's gotta be done.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin. Mr. Goodwin, if you come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. City manager, city council members, and city staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tony Goodwin. I reside in the Parkview section of the city and have an office in downtown as well, and also a, a retail store on High Street in downtown. So I'm gonna break two cardinal rules that I usually have from standing at this podium and speaking. And that is simply, I don't come up here to pound my own chest in most cases, and I don't, um, come up to advertise, but I am gonna do that tonight. Based on this, based on the discussion that you had, which was very good dialogue, very good discussion, as far as the debriefing of the Greenville trip, I think was exceptionally well. It's something that we all need to know about in what is the best practices on making a city work and downtown work. Going back to a little bit of history from what I've done, I've, I've been down here for now going on up to 30 some odd years, 25 years to this October is when I moved back to my, uh, my hometown, my place of my birth, right here into Port Norfolk, and then again over into Parkview. And I found that there was a real need for this city to be able to come out of the shadows and, and get something done. 96 was a very big time. Mr. Moody, you were here, and I know you witnessed everything that was going on in High Street in 1996, when probably 75 to 80% of the buildings were boarded up and, and basically in disrepair. And we've come a long way in just those 25 years, or 30 years, actually. So with that being said, I, uh, family business is real estate. We do real estate, and we try to do it as best as we possibly can with obviously a lot of restrictions and a lot of things to get in the way. Life gets in the way a lot of times. But in over the 20, um, 15 years of being a licensed real estate agent, and also just being actively involved in my community to see it being a better place, I've represented it's old or leased, uh, over a half a million square feet of downtown, proper. That's fact. I've done it, and I wanna do more. There's been a lot of obviously things that not always have sold, but I've obviously represented those. Had the keys to the building. I've, at some point in time, I've had a key to almost probably 60% of the buildings on High Street at some point in time. But I wanna say I wanna do more, and I wanna do more with you. I wanna do more with the synergy that we have going. But sometimes it doesn't always work out. I'd love to bring institutional knowledge to this process. I hate to see us make mistakes that we've already made in the past, because I was there with every one of those mistakes that were made. So I, I've sat down and I've spoken to a couple of you, obviously, one-on-one, face-to-face, and I'm here to help put this together and keep it moving forward without, again, moving and backwards, or getting stuck in the weeds when it comes to things that are sometimes a little bit difficult. But what I really wanna do, and that is my pounding the chest kind of thing, that again, I don't, that's one of my cardinal rules I don't wanna do. But I, I have to say, from the conversations that were had on last Tuesday evening, we decided in 2021, when I had a tenant leave the space of 304 High Street, which is the old Grants Department store, COVID basically ravaged her business. She didn't wanna renew, so I held on to it for a year, contemplating, what do we do? I told my 16-year-old daughter, I said, do you wanna open a business together? We opened a business together called Market Street and General Store. You've had that business on High Street now in November 20, or November 22nd of this year on High Street for three years. When we heard the conversation about Mass General Store, what's ironic is I studied Mass General Store and its original location in Velocruz, North Carolina, and then again, their Annex Store, which is just a mile down the street. And I studied every component of their business model to basically replicate exactly what they've done here on High Street in Old Town, all the way down to the candy, the general goods. We've adapted it to make a market. The market fell on its face. We opened it, and then two weekends, boom, boom, shootings downtown, everybody starts moving out, nobody wants to go out and do anything. We took it in the shorts, $10,000 worth of product down the tubes, and we just stopped the bleeding. But we wanna do more. We wanna make that a success. Let us work with you. Let us make a success, and let's acknowledge the fact that businesses that have been down here, really pushing the envelope and making things happen. Let us be part of your solution. Don't shut us out and don't think we're not doing the job you want us to do. But I appreciate you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Nicole Adams. Ms. Adams, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes. Nicole Adams. Okay? We'll go to the next speaker, Ms. Bridget Tool. Ms. Tool, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. It's an honor and privilege to be here.
Could you please bring the microphone down?
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. It's an honor and privilege to be here. My name is Bridget Tool. I live at 951 Green Street, Portsmouth, Virginia 23704. Um, elephant in the room, I want to mention about the blocking of the tunnel. I'm one of the ones responsible, blocked it from the other side. Um, no criminal intent, but when you don't have a voice in what happens to you in society, having a felony, not being able to get a job, wanting to work, wanting to be a law-abiding citizen, and you're shut out because of a charge, when a person's hurt and they don't have a voice, the blocking of the tunnel is the result. But I come to you this evening on the behalf of myself and many others who have been in the incarceration system. Many of us have been victims of trauma, victims of abuse. We've been, uh, victims of crimes ourselves, and when we feel like we have no protection, then we take matters in our own hands. So what I wanted to ask is for those, the city, for those of us who are dealing with that trauma, we have the Portsmouth Behavioral Health, can you make that available to all of those who've been formerly incarcerated? Because if we're not healed and whole on the inside, it's gonna result in two gun violence and theft, and all of, all of the above. It's gonna be blocking of the tunnel. And I wanna ask if you can go a step beyond that. Once a lot of us who have been formerly incarcerated, felonies, whatever, been completely healed, I ask the city if you can open up your doors to jobs, jobs that don't deal with children, of course, but there's plenty of janitorial jobs and things that could be done, um, by people who have been formerly incarcerated. I have applied for a janitorial job, and because of that back, for Portsmouth, and because of that background, I was turned down. And I wanna know how, how, uh, how much do I have to pay in order to be able to get a job, to be able to afford to buy housing in which a criminal background check denies you the right to housing? We have to deal with these issues, because we're not gonna be able to stop the crime anywhere unless we truly give people a second chance. We have to give people a second chance. If we don't, we're not gonna be able to stop the crime. We can't, uh, go back and change what a lot of us did, but at least allow us to become repentant and feel like, okay, I can change, I can be a better person, I can give to my community. And I've been on, I, I've applied for so many private industry jobs. And the funny thing is, over 500 companies on Wall Street can use felons as prison slave labor while they're incarcerated in private prisons, but when a lot of us get out, we can't even get a job, they won't even hire us. It's okay to exploit us for our labor, but they won't hire us. And I'm asking, I'm asking, you know, we got the Portsmouth City Jail. I was wondering if there's any way the city can formulate healing and rehabilitative programs for those who are incarcerated. But I wanna thank you for your time, and again, it's an honor and a privilege to be here.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Tillitt, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Tool, first of all, thank you for your, uh, your courage to come up and to speak on those issues. The city, we do have a lot of programs in the city that are connected to rehabilitation and reentry, but to your point, when you get through those programs, what's, what's next? The, the job? And so I know there's been a barrier for many people, um, across all demographics, especially in such a locality such as ours. And so what I would be interested in, and just to report back, Mr. Carter, is, um, as a locality, our, our current policy as it states to backgrounds, uh, but then also some possibilities within the Code of Virginia that would allow certain positions to explore the option, um, to individuals who may have, um, backgrounds that may prohibit it currently right now, but I'm sure there are some jobs that may not require, um, those types of, that may allow those types of, uh, individuals to, uh, partake in those types of jobs. So if we can get a report back on that, I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Tool, we do have a program in the city of Portsmouth called Portsmouth at Works. We can get you information, and I can tell you from talking to our Director of Economic Development, under which that program is, is run, that they do provide training for those who are re-entering into normal life. And in addition to that, I can vouch, there are employers that will hire someone who has previously been incarcerated, and we work very hard to work with our citizens who deserve a second chance. And so we'll, before you leave, we'll get you the information, so you can contact that program and see if there's a starting point in which you can gain some training, additional skills, and perhaps that job that you're seeking. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
There's a young lady sitting to your left with her hand up. If you give her your contact information, we'll make sure that you get the information that you need.
Mr. Manager, that concludes our agenda for this evening. If there are no other concerns for the good of the order, this meeting is adjourned. Drive safe, everyone. Take care.